Okay, noting the hour and the presence of a quorum, I call the Acton-Boxboro Regional School Committee to order. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming tonight. My name's Bridget Bieber, and I'm going to act as Chair of the meeting tonight. I'm the Vice Chair for Boxboro. And due to an unexpected minor surgical procedure this afternoon, Amy, our Chair, is not able to attend tonight's meeting, so she's asked me to chair the meeting in her absence. So I do want to thank you all for joining us tonight, and to everybody who attended last Wednesday night's meeting at the high school. Before we get started, I'd like to read a note from one of our other school committee members, Maya Minkin, who's out of town. No, I had it. Got it? Okay, got it, sorry. Dear School Committee Members, Administrators, and Members of the public, this statement is presented to you in order to explain my absence during this time. On May 18th, I had to leave the country unexpectedly for a business trip. Since the work was to take place in Israel, my birthplace, I decided to extend it beyond my professional duties and visit my beloved family. I was also joined by my own family and am currently pursuing the trip that I have long wanted to share with my children. I would like the public to be aware that I was present for the school committee meetings leading up to the current state of affairs. I will return on June 4th and will continue to carry out my duties and responsibilities as your elected representative. I have read and reread every single email sent to the committee these past weeks. I'm very sorry to be absent, but I'm staying informed so that I can step in imminently. Thank you for your understanding, and know that I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve the students and families of the Acton-Boxboro Regional School District. My resolve is, as always, to consider what is best for our students and for the district, especially in times of difficulty. To conclude this statement, I cannot but share some reflection and perspective from a region of the world that suffers profound strife and instability. It is important to value and cherish the systems we uphold and enjoy in our towns. I am continually impressed by the willingness of people to volunteer their time and energy to sustain a democratic and fair system. We should all take a moment to appreciate this. Very truly, Maya Minkin. Okay. Okay, the third item on our agenda tonight is a recommendation to approve Brian Griffin as a voting member of the Acton-Boxboro Regional School Building Committee. And I'm going to ask Christina to take this agenda item.
Thank you, Bridget. At our May 18th meeting, we voted to accept a slate of volunteers to serve on the AB School Building Committee. At that time, I told you I was still looking to fill in with a couple of people with construction and architecture experience. To that end, I'd like to ask that you support adding Brian Griffin to the committee tonight so he may be added when we submit our full slate to MSBA by this Friday. Brian is a current Boxboro resident. He grew up in Acton and was educated through the AB system. He has two young children, the oldest at the Blanchard School. He has an environmental engineering degree and 20-plus years of construction experience, most recently running his own firm. So I'd like to ask your support.
A move to approve.
Is there any further discussion? No? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any no votes? Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just to set the expectation for the public tonight, we've got a number of items on our agenda tonight, and we will invite public participation after we have discussed the various items on the agenda. But the public participation will be limited to subjects that are on our agenda tonight, and we are going to stick to our two-minute timeframe tonight. So I just want to put that out there so that everybody understands at the outset. We want to be fair and give as many people a chance to speak as possible, so we'll stick to the two minutes for everybody tonight. So I appreciate your cooperation with that. Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is an FYI, and that's the structure of the current central office. And we put this in our packet tonight for everyone to look at and just be reminded of. And this is illustrative of the team that we've got in the central office currently. And this was something that changed when Dr. Brand came onboard. There was a bit of restructuring in the central office, as well as some that came before him. So I just wanted to have this on the agenda as a reminder that we've got a big team in place at the central office. We discussed a little bit about this last week at our school committee meeting in terms of the different objectives that we talked about. But I think it's important to remember that we've got a very strong team of deputy superintendent along with assistant superintendents, each of whom have specific jobs that they do. And they've all communicated to us that they are willing to step in and help out and support us in whatever way possible. So does anybody have any comments about that? No? Okay. I'm going to take a minute also to read the memo that we got on the 29th from Marie Altieri, our Deputy Superintendent, because I think it might help inform our next agenda item. And she said, "Dear Acton-Boxboro Regional School Committee Members, as you all know, we have a strong leadership team of central office administrators and principals who will partner with the school committee to provide leadership and stability during this transition. As a leadership team, we will continue in our commitment to the district's work with student, mental health, and wellness, helping students find a healthy balance through our challenge-success work, and moving forward with improving our facilities. These important initiatives include possible modifications to our school schedules, including later start times and an updated homework policy. At this time, I think it may be best if the school committee considers hiring an external candidate to fill the role of interim superintendent. I will support any external or internal candidate that you hire in every way possible. I'm sure that the full leadership team will do the same. I wish you the best as we move forward together." Signed, Marie Altieri. So that came to us on the 29th, and I thank Marie for that letter. Moving on to the next item, and that is discussion of an interim superintendent versus a permanent superintendent. So having gone through the search process the last time, I know a few of us did that, it was a pretty extended process which started in the fall, but we're in a slightly different position at this juncture, since we have a vacancy that we need to fill. So the first thing that I think we need to talk about is whether we want to look for an interim superintendent to fill in the position temporarily, and then start a full superintendent search after a period of time, or whether we want to dive right into a full superintendent search right away. So I'm going to open that up to discussion for the committee. Katie?
Just given the awkward timing of it, I think an interim makes the most sense at this point, so we can do a real full search and get the best candidates with a well-timed search come next winter.
So I just want some clarity here. So Dr. Brand promoted Marie Altieri to Deputy Superintendent. It was December of 2015. I remember voting on the 17th of that month. And it is my understanding that her contract states that she's the designated superintendent in his absence. So starting July 1st, 2017, Marie Altieri is going to be our superintendent. Is that correct?
So she can fill in whenever Dr. Brand is out of the office, but we still have the choice to hire an interim superintendent to take on that role while we look for a full-time superintendent. So I don't think one precludes the other.
And she could fill that role, yes?
She could fill that role, yep. Paul?
I'm curious, and I don't know the answer to this. What's the difference in the process between hiring an interim and hiring a more permanent superintendent?
So I haven't been through the process of hiring an interim superintendent, but I have been through the other process, which I think you were on the committee then, too. So I think if we were looking for an interim superintendent, we would advertise for that. So it would be a shorter time span without the expectation that that person would necessarily be a candidate for the position. I think there are, sometimes there are retired superintendents who fill those positions, so they wouldn't be able to take on a full-time superintendent job as a permanent matter because they're retired already from the system. So I think if we were to go for an interim superintendent, we'd probably advertise in a less extensive way, I would think, than we would for a full superintendent search. And it may be more targeted to a specific group of people. If anybody else has anything to add, please feel free. Mary?
I would just add that, like, with an interim, you wouldn't expect them to move. And so you're likely looking at a Massachusetts candidate versus a permanent, you know, you're doing a national search, most likely, so.
Which is what we did last time. It was a really extensive process for the superintendent search. Yeah, Deanne first, and then Diane.
But if we're going to, if we're hiring an interim superintendent, and then we're looking, you know, so you're talking about the interim superintendent being here for just a year, but isn't the ramp-up for someone coming in at least a year? I mean, we have a lot of initiatives to go through.
That's certainly a consideration.
So I've given this a lot of thought, and so here's my two cents on this. I think the fewer transitions, the better. I would support launching an immediate search for a permanent superintendent. That's just how I feel. If we need an interim superintendent, I think the fewer transitions, the better. And more importantly, in just seven months, the voting citizens of Acton and Boxboro are going to go to the polls to determine if we do or do not receive MSBA funding for the new school. And so the next six to seven months, to me, is critical time in our district. And what is not optimal, it seems to me, is bringing in a new face who does not know anything about the initiatives that we've set in motion. When we have right here in the central office, and I read her letter, but we have Deputy Superintendent Marie Altieri, who is known and knowledgeable and has been an integral part in every phase of the teen effort that has made the district master plan actionable. She has a fund of knowledge, she has relationships with both town boards. I mean, she's kind of perfect for this. So I think that appointing her as interim is what is in the best interest of this district, especially in the next seven months. And it almost seems like a dereliction of duty not to have her lead at this moment in time, since it is so critical. So I'd be interested to hear from my colleagues on school committee why you think she would or would not be the best choice for interim.
Deanne?
I guess that's why I asked the question, because I don't understand how we get through the next seven months with somebody new at the helm, and they're learning about it as we're doing it. So how is that person supposed to speak to the community about a building project? Or, you know, I'm sure they know about challenge-success, but, you know, our school start time, our whole school choice. I mean, that took Glenn two years to learn and, you know, get comfortable with school choice. All that stuff, it's all interwoven with every decision we're going to be making going forward for the next year. I just don't know how you bring someone in and ramp them up unless you're going to have them do, you know, other projects. I mean, you know, maybe it's a matter of you have someone who's in-house just to help lead us through the next seven months, but we hire somebody to help offset the load that she might have handled, or, you know, Deb Booker, or other people, just so that they're not overwhelmed, because now they're reduced by one person.
Paul, did I see you?
I am concerned about a rental. They come and they're gone. They don't know the community, and we're, you know, a little unique. And I just think that a rental would have a tough time coming up to speed on that.
Okay, I'm going to go down the line here. Mary?
So, sorry. So it seems like we're discussing five and six at the same time. But in terms of number five, I do think we need an interim first, only because I don't think now's the right time to do a permanent search. I think that if we did a permanent search right now, we're likely to not get good candidates. We would get people who are kind of left over from other searches. And I think it's typically the fall when superintendents are thinking about transitioning positions, and that, at least from the other searches I've been involved in, that's the best time to do a permanent search. So I think we should be doing that in the fall, and that gives us a lot of time to get input from the faculty, staff, and the community to inform that search. But I do think we need someone. I don't think using an acting superintendent would be good. I think we need an interim person.
Katie?
To Diane's point, I think Marie would certainly do a great job. But I also wouldn't assume that an external interim wouldn't have history at AB. I think there's at least three retired superintendents that have a history at AB who do this in their retirement. So it's possible that an external candidate wouldn't be new to us. There wouldn't necessarily be that learning curve, so just to throw that out there.
Eileen?
Oh, okay. So I think I've been, come to this school committee for past one year. I've seen Marie did a great job, almost. He's always gave very clear presentation, this and that. And, you know, so I like, I think he's the best, probably, candidate right now to take over at least a lot of Glenn's job. However, we read, you know, right now, but we read a lot of input from our community, right? From all over the parents. I support we should start the search right away, because that whole search, nationwide or whatever, okay? So, but that whole search takes time. You know, because you never gonna see, say, you start to interview someone today, you'll get your candidate or whoever is suitable for our really very large and great district right away. So I support we should have formed the committee to start the search right away. At the same time, I think Marie will do a really, really great job. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, let's start with Christina.
Just a few comments. While I do agree with much of what has been said so far, I disagree that now is the right time to start a permanent search. It's just not the right cycle of timing for when people are planning to be looking for a job in a search. I think it makes much more sense to start a search either in the late fall or winter to be in sync with the traditional timing. I agree with much of what has been said about Marie and her capabilities. I want to try to respect her wishes if we can. She wrote us that letter, and I think we should try to consider her wishes. And I think some of what might be hard here is it might, how we feel about an external interim might depend on who those candidates or candidate is, and how their responsibilities will be structured. I do know some districts even hire a part-time interim to just take care of sort of the day-to-day operations, the day-to-day crises, and perhaps that's something we could consider. And our special projects could be headed up by existing people who are already working on them and already up to speed on them. And then we wouldn't have to worry about bringing in someone external and bringing them up to speed on our building project or on our, so that's just top of mind.
Okay. Did I see other hands? Deanne?
Well, I guess I had just wondered, because you said, I thought we were just talking about five, and Mary, you had brought up, they were talking about five or six, I guess.
Well, the intention is to talk about five right now. So do we want to have an interim superintendent versus a permanent superintendent search right now? So it's hard to keep on subject. We keep digressing a little bit. But that's the first step, I think, is to decide those, between those two things.
Well, and I guess, you know, before I could even, and I know that throws a lot at Marie as well, but before I would even consider having Marie be an interim, if she is going to apply for the position, then I do wholeheartedly agree it's impossible to find a superintendent to hire if there's an interim superintendent also applying for the position. So I think that's a critical answer to have before putting someone as an interim, because if they plan on applying for the job, then you can't have that person as an interim. It just, it just doesn't make sense for the district.
So I've heard a few different things here. Let me see if I can summarize where it seems like we are right now. So Paul, you seem to be concerned about hiring an interim from outside the district. Does that sum up your concern? Because of getting up to speed, et cetera?
If I may, though, because I heard what Katie said, or was it Mary, that, you know, there might be some external candidates who know the district. If that's the case, then I'm willing to work with that.
Okay. And Diane, I wrote down notes, but it had to do more with a particular candidate as opposed to an interim. Did you feel as though we should go for an interim now?
No. I feel like we shouldn't.
Okay.
I know when we hired, when we were looking for a pupil services director, the search was started right away. It did not yield candidates that we felt were, that we wanted to hire, and so we had a second search. So I don't see the problem. You know, we might get a great candidate first time around, even with the quote-unquote leftovers, among the leftovers, but, you know, that's, I think we should launch into a permanent superintendent right away.
Okay. And Mary, you seem to think a permanent search, it's not the right time now, right? And it would be a difficult transition. That's what I have written down.
Yeah, I mean, I think that an interim helps us keep everything moving while we do a full permanent search, because those take time. And, you know, I think that if we just use Marie as acting superintendent, then it gets into a little bit of what Deanne's talking about, is if she applies, then do people get concerned that they're not going to apply because she might be a shoe-in? But also, it doesn't give enough staffing for all the work that needs to be done. And so I think the interim position would be needed to help us keep all the initiatives that we have going. I do, I'm thinking somewhat similar to Christina, is how we divvy up the roles. I think keeping the central office staff who have been integral in many of these initiatives on those is important. And then the, an interim person could take more of the day-to-day work, communications, things like that, the things that always come up unexpectedly.
That makes a lot of sense. And Katie, I know I've got you down in terms of an interim, yes. The answer is yes, and hopefully we'd be able to find somebody familiar with the district, which is a possibility, so. And Eileen, you seem to say that you think the search, the full search should be started right away? Okay.
Marjorie?
Yes?
I think Marie is the best we can, best candidate could be in the, so there are two questions, right? So the first is interim superintendent could be Marie, I'm thinking right now, because as the way we, I have known her through our meetings. So that is the first question. But, but I do feel we need to start permanent search right away.
Okay. Jess?
So can I just clarify something? So if we're talking about, Marie doesn't, I understand from reading the contract that Marie becomes the acting, but acting is different from interim, correct? So if we are launching an interim search, she would then have to apply, and then we wouldn't be going against her wishes. If she wants to apply, she applies, correct?
I believe that's correct, yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, because if we, if we're talking about doing an interim search, we don't have an assumed candidate?
No, no. In fact, I would assume that we don't have.
We don't have, right.
We don't have a candidate right now.
That would be my assumption, too.
We have to look for one.
Sure, okay.
Paul, did I see your hand?
Yeah, you did. There was something Diane mentioned that I remembered about that search for the pupil services, and that was the first search really felt rushed. And I, I'm concerned about that in this case, no matter what we do, whether it's for interim or for, or for the permanent, is having a component where it's rushed. Now, I think that's more of an issue with the interim, and not so much an issue with a permanent. And I'm, I'm thinking that the timing for that, because the fall is kind of the time to do the permanent search, really, we're only looking for a few months to fill here. And I'm wondering if it, yeah. See, I struggled with this, because I read, I had to reread Marie's letter a couple times. She's actually recommending not using her, despite the fact that I think that makes the best sense. But, so if I'm going to support the interim, I really need to know that someone's going to be able to hit the ground running.
So, and I think, just to clarify one thing, Paul, I think it means more than an interim just for a few months. Because if our search starts, whether we start our search now, or we don't start it until September, I think it's, the last search took at least six months. And then with the position starting in July of the following year. So I think, you know, it's going to be a period of time, which makes me think we really need somebody in the position, whether it's full-time or part-time. And I really like what was said about, you know, potentially divvying up responsibilities to allow people in the central office who have been involved in some of these ongoing initiatives that we've had to continue in those roles, but having an interim superintendent who can step in and handle emergencies and fires and, you know, the standard kind of communication, budget items, et cetera. Even though there would be potentially a ramp-up to learn some of those things with strong backup, I think it would still be helpful to the central office. I just don't think we can go without somebody in that position for this period of time. That's my personal feeling. So, yes.
I just, I just want to reiterate that this is not a typical year, and if it was just like business as usual, and it's, it's a huge district, and we need somebody to kind of fill in, so that the people who, the team members in central office who have been working on these initiatives can keep working on these, I get that. But this, this is a year where we need a leader. We need a strong leader. We are asking a lot of the citizens of Acton and Boxboro. And I don't think it's enough to just have someone come in to kind of put out the fires and talk to people. It's not enough, not this year.
Deanne?
My one only comment is, if you decide to do the breakup of responsibilities, I would assume at one of our next meetings, we need to define what the responsibilities of the interim is, and what the responsibilities of each assistant and deputy, right? We have to define those.
I would think so.
Line by line.
Yeah, it sort of depends, too, if the committee decided to try to find someone as an interim, and we were lucky enough to find someone out there who might be familiar with the district, that could certainly help to inform some of that as well. So that might be, you know, reaching its straws, but it's possible. So. So I'm not sure if I'm hearing consensus around the table or not. I've tried to keep track, but you can ask a question. Yes? Your bike's not on. Hold on one second, please.
Give her a minute.
One second, she's going to come down and turn it on.
So it sounds like you're trying to sort of poll everyone, and then you, you, you know, make sure that you have the remarks down, so it sort of gets the position down. And now you're seeing if there's a consensus, and you haven't asked for any public comment. Now, last Wednesday, we had a very contentious meeting, and part of the reason for that was because of lack of transparency. I see this as another process violation. There's people that are coming here to talk about this, and you're trying to basically reach a decision before there's any public comment. We sent you a letter today with, last night, with four points that the community had come up with, and there's been no mention of that. We haven't been able to talk about that, and yet you're trying to reach a consensus. And yet, you're trying to reach a consensus. So I urge you to stop and ask for some comment before you've hardened your positions and have made your decision already, and then the comments are superfluous.
Thank you very much for your comment. As I said previously in the meeting, once the committee has finished their discussion, and I'm not saying that we're taking a vote, but once we have finished our discussion, we will absolutely invite public comment. And the letter that you sent is in our packet, and once we've finished our discussion, and it gets to the appropriate time, I plan to read it into the record. So I thank you very much for your comment. Yes, Paul?
I think that's typically the way we do it, is to let the committee have the first crack at it, and then we open it up to the public.
It absolutely is, yes. Is there any further discussion from the committee on this particular point? Yes?
So if we decide, as a committee, that we're going to pursue a permanent search right now, does Marie just act in the interim until we hire someone? I mean, it's not, we're not going to find someone, you know? Mary just said it usually takes like six months. So to Diane's point, if we have to have a leader right now, does that then make Marie just the acting leader? I mean, how does that? After, after June 30th, we no longer have a superintendent, so.
Right. So I think absent any action by the school committee to search and hire, search for and hire an interim superintendent, then the deputy superintendent, who happens to be Marie, would step in as the acting superintendent. Now, if we decide we want to hire an interim superintendent, then we can talk about the process that would be behind that, and see how quickly we could get ramped up to do that, to have that person in place, I would think, as quickly as possible.
Sure.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, Eileen?
I don't think I have a problem with the first one. You know, so interim superintendent could be Marie, or maybe you're doing the search. But I do feel we need to have time from the committee, and we need to have time to do the search. And that permanent search, I do not really mind or care a lot about interim superintendent, acting or not. But we do need to start a search of formal committee. And I do not have experience what happened three years ago, or whatever. But why not we listen to the public? And formal committee, and start a search for the permanent superintendent? Because you never know. People start to finding a job, and we are in the professional field. It's not like you start finding a job today, you're going to get that tomorrow. It takes a while, right? For us to find a good candidate. And it takes some time for whoever are those people to find the right job. So that's, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thanks. Paul?
So I don't view getting an interim precluding a search for a permanent superintendent. I'm actually remembering what Christina said, is that, you know, the timing, if we start now, it's just, it's just not the right timing. So, so maybe, you know, in respecting Marie's recommendation, we get a super, an interim superintendent who's familiar with this district to serve for the next year. And in that, in that next year, we, at some point, start the permanent superintendent search. That's kind of where I'm falling.
Diane?
And I also just want to clarify that that search is going to start anyways pretty quickly, not necessarily advertising, but the whole process is probably going to start soon, in regards to within the district, which is defining what we're looking for. Like, there's a lot of pre-steps that are going to be happening, Eileen, before we actually get to the advertisement. So I think that stuff's going to be going on concurrently anyways, right? As soon as we can do it, right?
Yeah, and we'll talk about that further down on the agenda, too. Paul?
So I'm just curious, do we have any candidates in mind for external?
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure.
So, and I don't mean to push too far, but, because I think we're just talking about deciding whether to do the interim or permanent. But, you know, it would help me feel a little more comfortable if I knew that there was somewhere out there, kind of already, you know, primed to step in.
Yeah, I don't know if there's anybody primed, but there, there are definitely retired superintendents out there who have filled in, in other districts. So I think we'd have to reach out to people that we might know, and see if there's anyone out there that might be interested. Any other comments from the committee? Nope?
I had a question.
Yes?
Steve Fowler from Boxborough. This may go to what Paul was just mentioning, and my question is, it's why the or? Perhaps you could do, you know, both at the same time, look for an interim and for permanent. Perhaps even, if you don't have that in place by July 1st, then Marie is the acting by default. If you do put her in, despite what she's asked you to do, which is to look for an external candidate for interim, you're going to have no deputy. So you're still going to have three superintendents. So why not, if you're going to, especially going to have a committee, that's going to be a search committee, and it's so important to get leadership in place that's, you know, aware of what's going on in the community and already part of it. Obviously, Marie's going to be here, so whether she's a deputy, the acting, or the interim, she's going to be part of the process. So there's no harm in looking for an interim, I would think, and a permanent. And have that fallback position of, if we don't find an interim by July 1st, Marie's automatically going to be the acting superintendent, right? So I'm just, just, I don't know. I know it's a big thing to undertake, to look for someone, and it may take a year, two years, whatever, to get a permanent person, but that, to me, is all the more reason why you should consider, and all of the above, or at least, you know, not either-or, permanent or interim, perhaps, you know, look for all at the same time. I just, my question is, have you considered that, and is that a possibility?
Thank you. Yes?
Christine Marlowe? Sorry. I just have a few questions for you. Can you please explain to me what the difference in the central office is now versus before? You had mentioned earlier that there was a change when Dr. Brand came in, and I'm sorry, I just don't understand what the difference is, and that would be very helpful for me.
Okay.
The second question is, what is the cost going to be for hiring an interim? And, and where are we going to find that money? Because this is an expense we weren't expecting when the, the budget was approved at the town meetings. And we've already have money out, like, close to, with everything, you know, like a half a million. And I'm just wondering where this money's going to come from, and what other things will suffer? And that is a concern. If, and then my third question is, if Marie is the interim superintendent, would her salary be increased, or would it stay the same? And would we be trying to replace her in her position? Thank you.
Okay. So the change is in the central office, I'll try to think back three years. So I know the, we now have a deputy superintendent position that we did not have before. That was one change. Also, the position for pupil services, Dawn's position, was elevated to an assistant superintendent for student services position. And Deb's was as well. So the, we have two assistant superintendents that we did not have before, as well as a deputy superintendent. So those jobs were elevated slightly. So, yes, please.
We also added an additional administrative assistant in Karen Call to support the superintendent and the finance director.
Diane?
Well, and also, Dawn's, the student services was realigned, right?
That's right.
I mean, that whole department was different departments, and that whole department was realigned. And then that's why it was elevated to assistant superintendent, because that whole, right?
Yeah, it, it took over the student services, as well as the pupil services responsibilities. So, does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
The only thing is, the deputy superintendent, how are her roles different from the assistant superintendents? I know, like, the pupil service one, that's a totally different thing.
Yep. So the deputy superintendent's role was specifically established to make the line of responsibility clearer when the superintendent was out of the office. So the role is to take over when the superintendent's out of the office. And that was the design of that position when it was changed. Okay. With respect to your other two questions?
So when George Frost was here, he was the deputy superintendent, and then that position was gone, and then it was added back. So this isn't the first time that we've had a deputy superintendent?
No, but it's changed. It went away, and then it came back. Yeah, thank you, Beth. With respect to your other two questions, I'm not sure I can answer those at this time. You asked about the cost for hiring an interim superintendent. We haven't gone down that road yet, so I can't really give you a firm answer on that. But it's certainly something that we're looking at and concerned about as well. And in terms of where the money's going to come from, we're going to have to look at the budget and see what, where we're going to find the money to do that. So it's definitely a very good question. And if the deputy superintendent becomes the interim, you asked, would that salary change? Yes. And I can't answer that yet. We're not even there yet, so. It's premature, but I appreciate the question. Okay. Thank you. Thanks. Alan?
Okay, Alan Nichom again. So what I'm here to talk about is the four recommendations that we sent via email last night. And if you'll, since no one else is up here, would you mind giving me a couple minutes, just so I can go through them quickly?
Would you like me to read them into the record? And it won't go against your time. How's that? Okay? And then if you have any more, more to add, I'll?
I do have more to add.
Okay, I'll call on you.
I don't know if you forgot, there was, my questions were out there. I'm just curious about this. Deputy and interim, can you do both at the same time? I'm sorry.
I think that's, that is what, when we say interim, then we're going to move into looking for a permanent. And so if we say interim, that it means interim, looking for a permanent next, we're not going to stay just with an interim. But if we just go permanent, then it sounds like there are some people who may want to just jump into that search only, and not. So that's what we're discussing.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't answer you specifically. I kind of thought we had just talked about that, and you were putting your question on the record, so my apologies for that. Okay. So we received this letter on Monday, May 29th, as well. Dear Chairman Christian Murphy and the AV School Committee, our community group has met and has made a list of four requests. We ask the school committee to seriously consider and take positive action on during the discussion on the process for replacing the school superintendent. Number one, we request that the AV Regional School Committee conduct a robust national search to get the best permanent superintendent. Number two, in order to attract the best candidates in a national search, we believe an interim superintendent should be appointed, who should not be eligible to be a candidate for the permanent position. Number three, we request that the school committee reinstate the qualifications used during the superintendent search of 2008, 2009, which hired Superintendent Mills. And number four, we encourage the school committee to have a very strong community representation on the superintendent search committee. We plan on attending the next meeting, May 30th, 2017, in the junior high school auditorium, starting at 7:30 PM. Courtually yours, Susri Anurada, I hope I pronounced that correctly, and forgive me if I didn't, and Alan Nichom. So I'm just going to respond to a couple of these points. Number two, in order to attract the best candidates in a national cer, oops, sorry, that's the wrong one. Regarding the national search, I think we did that last time, and if we do a full superintendent search, I would suspect it's going to be a national search. The qualifications used during a superintendent search, we'll actually get into that later on in the agenda. And then regarding the strong community representation on the superintendent search committee, again, that's a later agenda item, which is why I was holding off on putting this into the record. But if you have anything else you want to add, please do so.
Okay, so our first two points were on topic for this, for the agenda. So the order of the points is not an accident. The most important thing, by far, is that Acton, Boxborough deserves the best school superintendent we can hire. That's why we're all here. We want the best candidates, we want the best pool of candidates, we want to hire the best person. I'm not prejudging any candidates, whether it's an internal or external, or whoever happens. But I do want to have a really great pool of potential candidates, so that the search committee can do their job. The problem is, if there is somebody who is serving as the interim superintendent, and they are a candidate for the permanent position, whoever it is, that takes the process, because people will know about that, and they won't want to apply to be the permanent, because they'll feel that the interim has the inside track for it. Now, it doesn't always work out that way. Sometimes interim does a bad job, and they're not, maybe they don't even become a finalist. But it looks on paper like somebody coming from another state, or from outside the area, will hear about this, will know through inside discussion who's applying. And if they know that the interim person, whoever it is, is applying for permanent, it will depress the number of applicants for the permanent search. Therefore, we will not have the best pool of available candidates, and we may not be able, we may not pick the best possible person for our school system. So that's the number one thing that, the number one concern, is that we get the best person. I think we can all agree that we all want to get the best person. And to do that, we have to do number two, which is if you appoint an interim, they have to be excluded from the permanent process. This is something that everyone who attended our little community group felt was important. From a process point of view, it makes sense. I've read several articles on this that back up this type of thing. And I would say that at the meeting on Wednesday night, somebody made a comment. They said, "Well, if the interim can't apply for the permanent, we won't necessarily get a good interim." And that is exactly backwards. We don't want to get a good interim, I mean, we do, but, but the purpose of this is to get the good permanent, not to get the good interim. So we have to keep our eye on the ball, and do our process around getting the best permanent replacement. And then, how do we fit the interim into that? So that's my statement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul?
So I think that your, your second point kind of aligns with my concern about the interim position. But as I am thinking this through, what I'm beginning to envision that interim position to be is someone who we may already know, who may know the district, and may be a retiree. If that's the case, then I, I think we've solved that problem.
Thanks, Paul. Mary?
So I have a similar comment, but a slightly different. So I could see where that point works with someone who's a retired superintendent. But otherwise, I think legally, we can't say, you can't apply for a position. I, I don't think that's allowed. So if it were, if we were to fill the interim with anyone who was not retired, then they would have, I think legally, have the opportunity to apply for the full position. So that may be a reason why we do want to go external retired superintendent.
Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Eileen Matarisi, 6 Madison Lane. Just to diverge ever so slightly, can you, as individuals on school committee, tell the audience sitting here, are you entertaining the idea of professional mediation with Dr. Brand? And will he have an opportunity to answer the same question, since he's not sitting here with us tonight, at maybe the next school board meeting, or the next school committee meeting?
So I can't answer the question for Dr. Brand, but that's not something that's on our agenda tonight. So we're at the point now where we're moving on to the next stage. And if that's something that the committee wants to talk about, we'd have to put it on an agenda for the, for the next meeting.
I'm just trying, help me understand, so has that been eliminated as one of the possibilities for filling those positions?
So right now, we have a negotiated agreement with Dr. Brand that was mutually negotiated, that he's Brand that was mutually negotiated, that he's leaving the district at the end of the current school year. And so, we're in the position now where we are moving on to the next step, which is to fill that position, either with an interim or eventually a full-time replacement.
I'm not trying to badger you.
No, 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 I understand.
I respect the process, I respect the system. I feel like we went from the last meeting to this meeting, and there's sort of a gap in there, that neither, that opportunity there was answered, nor is that being answered here. And I'm, it's, I'm just sort of drawing attention to the idea that maybe we're not considering that, or maybe just school committee's not considering it.
Well, at this point in time, we've got an agreement where he's leaving the district, so we have no reason to.
Has he been asked directly?
I can't answer that question. I have not asked him directly, no.
Okay.
No, I mean, we negotiated an agreement that he was part of.
No, I understand that part.
It was amicable, so there was no, there was no reason to have further discussion after that agreement was signed and done. So, if that's something the school committee would want to entertain, then we would have to entertain it at another time. We don't have it on our agenda tonight, so we can't discuss that.
Okay, well, I would, I would like to then leave it with imploring school committee to reconsider that discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes?
Back to Mary's comment that making it, the interim position, someone would not be eligible to apply for permanent, I think you said that may be illegal. Do you, do you know whether it is illegal?
I don't know. I don't know the law there. It just seems like, to me, you can't post a position that only some people can apply for.
I would suggest that if you don't know, you don't bring up this point, which sounds like it may be illegal. I suggest you find out whether it is or is not illegal before you bring it up.
Well, I thought maybe some of my fellow school committee members might know, and if I don't ask, then they can't answer that, so.
You didn't ask, you made a statement.
Well, it was a statement that was looking for response.
And we don't know the answer to that.
I think you just have my response.
Thank you. Any other? Oh, yep.
Lauren Grady. And I hate talking in public forums, by the way. I hate little kids. Couple things. You guys all seem to know how much of a resource Marie is for us. And she came in for this position three years ago and was not chosen as the one to get it. Now, it sounds like some of you are almost asking her to take the position that they didn't give her before, even though she's very respectfully asked not to be considered for that. So, I just, I don't want to lose her as a resource. She's going to be around no matter what we do. So, just when you're talking about interim and talking about her being a possibility, I think we need to really think of honor what she's requested, because she has given so much, and she's done such a nice job, and she is going to be a resource for us. But she may not be if we push her into a position that she's very nicely asked not to be in.
Thank you. Any more discussion from the committee on this particular topic? I think I'm hearing that some committee members would like to consider looking for an interim superintendent. If there's someone that is familiar with the district, that would be a great benefit, obviously, to all of us, and hiring them at least on a part-time basis, if not a full-time basis. And at the same time, continue the work to start a full superintendent search. Is that what I'm hearing from everyone around the table? Does anybody disagree with that statement? No? Okay. So, it sounds like we need to pursue an interim position, and we'll figure out how we're going to do that. But let's keep going through the agenda, because I think there will be some overlap.
So, do you want to motion?
Let's hold off on the vote until we talk a little bit more about some of the process, because I think it may become more clear as we talk process as to exactly what we need to vote on. Does that make sense? Okay. So, moving on to number six, which is the discussion of an internal candidate versus an external candidate. So, we've talked about looking for an interim superintendent. We have a letter from our deputy superintendent indicating that that person would not like to be considered for the interim position. I don't know if there are other people in the district that would be interested in an interim position. I have no idea, having not talked to anybody about that. We've talked a little bit about entertaining external candidates for an interim position as well. So, I'm not sure that we really need to make a decision on one versus the other on this agenda item. When we were putting the agenda together, it seemed like it was a natural flow, but it seems as though, and you know, certainly disagree with me if you think I'm wrong, seems to me that if we're looking for an internal, I'm sorry, if we're looking for an interim superintendent, and we put something out there advertising that as such, we would entertain candidates, no matter where they came from. Is there a consensus on that? Yep. Diane?
Can I just say that Marie is an asset? That's an understatement to this district. But our job is to consider what is best right now for our students in our district, and not to protect someone's future career pursuits. So, I am feeling like I am in a real bind after receiving that, because I feel like those two things have, are conflicting for me. She is the best person to stay with us for seven months in a leadership role at a critical time. So, I'm just going to put it out there. I'm really uncomfortable with her letter.
Christina?
Diane, I agree. Marie's letter does leave me a bit uncomfortable, but she will remain, assuming she remains with the district, in a very senior leadership role, regardless of who we have as an interim. And I think she'll be a strong supporter of whoever that person is. And I think until we know who we're considering, it's hard to imagine anyone else being a great fit or better, but I think we might feel differently once we meet them.
Mary?
I'm curious what other committee members think of the request from Susri and Alan regarding that the interim cannot apply for the permanent position, because I agree. I think Marie's a great asset, and I wouldn't want to limit her from applying. She was our second choice in the last round, and it's been a number of years, and she's had more experience. So, for me, if the committee feels like that is something they want to honor, that the interim, and I understand the reasoning behind it. It does limit who then is willing to apply if they think there's a strong internal person who's going to get it. I understand that. But if people are going to honor that, then I definitely would not want Marie as an interim.
Any other comments around the table right now? Okay. Yes.
So?
Would you mind just stating your name?
My, my name is Ananda Pepala. I live on Willow Street. My kids go to Douglas. This is my first meeting I've attended, and it bothers me how we talk about one candidate for a position, how we talk about what her interest is in the role that she wants to perform or not perform. When you take a job, it comes with a role and responsibilities description. Help me understand what the roles and responsibility is of a deputy superintendent. It's not a choice. She's been voted for that position, and there are responsibilities with it. And what I'm frustrated here, listening to this conversation, is let's go down to the process and the roles and responsibilities of that job description. It is not a choice. She was elected there by the people, and she has to perform that role. If you can provide some clarification, I think it will be very beneficial. We keep jumping on to the next steps of her not wanting to be an interim, because we would not want to preclude her from applying for a superintendent. This is not just about one person. The fact that we talk about her as if, you know, this is something she has a choice on, it's something that, you know, we sit in an open forum and talk about that already as a possibility is unacceptable. So, help me understand the roles and responsibilities. If there is not a superintendent, can she, does she have to assume some of these roles and responsibilities? And can we stop speculating about which position she can and she cannot take?
So, the role of the deputy superintendent is to step in, in the absence of the superintendent. That is the general role of the deputy superintendent. However, I think that's very different than assuming that one person in a particular role as a deputy is going to step in and take on a second full-time job for an, potentially an extended period of time. So, I think that's the difference. And what we're really talking about is trying to figure out how to get the work of the central office done as efficiently as possible in a very important year. So, I think that's, that's where we are. And I think, you know, it's very difficult for anybody, whether it's people sitting at this table or people that work in our central office, just because you have a job in a public entity like a school system, it's really difficult for people to be talking about their jobs and their roles in a public forum like this. So, I just want to be really respectful of that, just because you work for a school district. You know, you don't give up all of your privacy or whatever, so, and I'm not saying anything to criticize you. It's just a reminder for all of us.
No, I respect what you do for the district. I just feel like, one of the comment that Mary Brolin made about, oh, she does, we have to respect that, if I understood it correctly, and please correct me if I didn't understand it, is we have to respect that she doesn't want to be an interim, but you know, the path to the superintendent is a possibility. That's how I understood. I think we shouldn't be jumping ahead. We shouldn't be jumping ahead and making those statements as a member of the school committee. There might be so many people watching this conversation, when they hear this, this is exactly what Alan was talking about. It does not encourage the right pool of candidates. She doesn't want to be considered for the interim. Whatever the process says, we should do that, but we should not be leading the path to the, to the superintendent position. We should not be making statements so that interested candidates can apply, and we get the best pool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's really, you know, it's a fine line, because I think in any district, whether it's Acton, Boxborough, or any place, there are likely to be strong internal leaders in any potential district that might be looking for a superintendent or another position of leadership. So, that's always a challenge, I think, when you're doing a search, hoping that, you know, people who know the district, and it's a small world. I mean, people know what's out there in different districts, so it's a small world, and it's difficult. But I think, you know, what's important to the school committee, and I will speak for the other members right now, is finding the best person for the job long-term. I think that's really what we're interested in, both, you know, for the district, for the students, and for the, the things that we have going on in the district to carry them forward. So, Diane?
And I want to clarify one of my statements, which is, the reason that I'm concerned if, you know, when we were going through the search before, we were warned that if we had an internal candidate, it definitely reduces the possible candidates in the future. I'm not concerned about Marie Alteri's future path, right? My concern is the district and getting the best superintendent. So, for me, and I think for most people up here, the discussion is, are we hindering ourselves letting her be the interim superintendent, because she might apply? So, we're not concerned about, you know, her future path and making sure she has the best path, because, you know, she's wonderful in our district. It's really more a concern of, are we going to limit ourselves with the next, with our superintendent's search and reducing the possibility of the best candidates? So, when, when, when I, when I made the statement of, I don't, I'm not comfortable with her being the interim, if her future goals are to be, you know, applying to the superintendent role, I'm, my biggest concern is, what's that's going to be perceived on the outside of someone trying to apply for the job of the superintendent? And I just think that that hinders all the applicants wanting to apply, so.
Mary?
So, I want to note two things. First is, when people apply, nobody knows who's applying. And so, it is anonymous through much of the process. And second, this question I put on the table about whether people want to respect this request, it's not just Marie. My guess is, I haven't counted, but I, I'm guessing there's five people who work in this district who are superintendent-qualified. And so, you know, we can take the name out of it, but there's many, I think, internal possibilities, and are we going to limit those if we respect this, this one or not? And for me, that's going to influence partially whether I am considering an internal or an external candidate.
Okay, move to this side of the room.
Hi, my name is Jen McLean, and I understand that you can't speak for Marie, but I am curious if the school committee intends to ask her why she does not wish to be the interim superintendent, if it's because she doesn't want the responsibilities, or if it's because she does wish to pursue the permanent position.
I'm not sure it really matters why. I haven't thought about asking her. We just received her letter, so.
I think it would be interesting, based on what's going on, to find out why she's not interested in being an interim superintendent. And if she intends to apply, are there other reasons why?
Well, I'm not going to ask her if she intends to apply, because that's confidential when we get to that process.
But I think it would be interesting to know why she doesn't want to be considered for the position.
Thank you. Alan?
Alan Nichom. So, I want to publicly say that having Marie Alteri write that letter was very positive in my mind. I think that was courageous. As far as I'm concerned, the reason she doesn't want to be the interim is obvious. And I again reiterate that, oh, and let me say that I think Marie would probably be an excellent choice as superintendent, all right? My thinking about Marie has changed a lot, based on some, you know, recent things like this letter. However, the most important thing is we get the best candidate. We can't pick from a field of one, and some members of the school committee feel like they already know who the best candidate is. In the whole world, they know who the best candidate is. That's impossible. So, you have to have a broad search. You have to encourage people to apply from all over, and then you have a search committee which goes through a process. And if Marie Alteri or anybody is a finalist, then it becomes a public process for the final three people, and I'm sure the school committee will pick the best candidate. And that's what they need to focus on. But you can't anoint somebody, as other people have said. And we can't, we can't limit the pool of people who apply. So, I agree with what Diane said, and I hope that you follow that recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
I just want to say that I was not picking a candidate. I was just saying, I think that she'd be a fine candidate in the pool. So, there's no anointing going on, at least at my seat.
Thank you. Yes?
Laura Krieger. I've been close to this process, you know, the hirings and firings of superintendents in other nearby districts. And so, I'm really concerned that, you know, we're talking about internal versus external candidates, and how are you going to find the best person? And I'm pretty sure that really well-qualified people from outside, they don't want to work for a school committee who is this divided. And I know that you've said you want to just move on, and you know, we've all seen that. But we're still thinking about, some of us, that May 18th vote for Amy as chair, that really revealed some internal divisive thing among members. And like any boss, you know, you want to go work for a well-functioning boss who's going to make your job clear and help you get it done, right? And there are, there are things that we think, we, I'm speaking for myself, may have contributed to that, when we see the vote, and we see the statements Diane made. And some of that is, were there any meetings of subgroups or fewer than need, you know, fewer, the number of people who don't need to be included in an open meeting, that kind of thing? We won't see the minutes. There are no minutes, that discussed any of these issues about superintendent, Dr. Brand, that kind of thing, before the April 26 meeting? Because that, that's something that, you know, I think could definitely cause this kind of division, but it doesn't seem to be resolved, and we haven't seen anything about why it's within this committee and how it's going to be fixed, or are people... why it's within this committee and how it's going to be fixed, or are people going to leave? Like, what's going to make a candidate want to work for this group, knowing what we know?
So, the more, most important thing, I think, this committee can do, in terms of your question, is to move forward with the process, which is what we're doing tonight. So, I'm going to not answer all of your questions. As I said at the outset, public comment tonight is going to be limited to the agenda items that we're talking about, which is, in this case, we're talking about interim superintendent, internal, external candidates. So, I think the most important thing for this committee to do is to move on and do the jobs that we were elected to do, which in this case is to come up with an action plan to find a new superintendent that benefits this district as best we can.
You're elected to work together to do that.
And we're sitting here together tonight, working together to do that.
But you don't go to work for a company that has good processes. You go to work for a good boss.
That's true. And the best thing we can do is work together as a committee, which we're doing tonight, to move forward with the process.
So, what's changed since May 18th and today, between all of you?
As I said earlier, we're going to work together to move through this process, and that's all I'm going to say about that.
So, we're supposed to trust that?
Yeah. Paul.
There, there are 11 members, but there's, there's a, there's a voice that represents the committee. There's actually no vote that we require to be unanimous, and so, that plays out every now and then. We're, we're often, I think, on the same page, but sometimes there are disagreements, and that's, that's part of the process.
But when you talk about trust and integrity, that's more than just not on the same page. That's what's out here, and that's what, how we're feeling about whether we trust a good process.
Thank you.
Hi, Heather Hare. First, I just want to say, I really appreciate the conversation that you are having tonight. I think that this is a great example of when nine people get together and have an open conversation, and it's not always in agreement, but it's, it's in conversation, and it gets to a point that then you get to consensus. So, I really appreciate your candidness and how you're all bringing unique questions to the table, and we're thinking about them. So, I can say that for the last two searches, I have been part of this, the superintendent search, and you are correct, that it's a very lengthy process, and there's certainly a valid and a much more appropriate time when it comes to the candidates that you want and that you're looking for to make the best decision for the district. I think that you all make a lot of great points in terms of Diane talking about, you know, this is a, this is a year that we have a lot of decisions to make, we've got a lot of things on the table, what's the best thing for our district and how do we get there? I think that the elephant in the room, when you read, you know, even Marie's statement, and there's so many questions around it, is, you know, when you hear the conversations in the public for the last week and a half about restrictions, if we're looking at both sides of that, we want the best for the community, and then we're talking about restrictions, I'm not surprised to hear that maybe someone who could be completely appropriate for that later position would take that, that role. I think that it's, it's very difficult to start this with so many restrictions if, in fact, you're looking for the best qualified candidate in the long run. And, so I think that's a job that you all have, just in terms of, of looking at how to get there, and I appreciate the process that you're going through. I really would, would say that in terms of what's the best for our kids, our, our teachers in our district, that you continue to have these great conversations, and if, in fact, you know, you have someone right within your administration that can, that can really play a key leadership role in the next seven months to get us and keep us on track with where we're going, the initiatives that we have, and the goals that we have, that you don't restrict that that person to possibly be also a candidate for your search. And in doing so, I hope that through a robust, full search, the best qualified candidate will step up, whether it's internal or external. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Good evening. My name is Kumar, 11 Acton. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you. I have one comment and two questions. The comment echoed by various people before this, this is the school committee. I think our goal is to find the right people to lead us. I'm not sure why we get to what Marie wants or doesn't want. I don't know if that is even relevant or needs to be anything more than, I mean, I don't know why we even need to discuss it. We, if she doesn't want to do her job, or doesn't want to do an interim job, that's completely, you know, if she wants to do her job, she does it, doesn't want to do it. I don't know why we need to discuss it. You have to pick who's the right person, and we need to go forward with it. But my two questions. The first one, considering the fiasco we've been in, has the committee codified its philosophy and goals so that we know what the committee is looking for and that there is alignment with the next superintendent, interim or otherwise? Have we already gone through the process on lessons learned to say, this is what we want to document and need from the next superintendent, so we don't have to, you know, figure out how we get into this mess one more time? Second, my assumption is that you're going to do the same due diligence for an interim superintendent as well as a permanent superintendent. If that is the case, why do you think finding an interim superintendent is going to be something really quick? Because you want to make sure whoever you're bringing in, retired or otherwise, needs to align with these philosophies and goals that caused the disagreement to begin with. And if I don't want to be in the same situation again, I want to make sure that we have an interim superintendent who has the same goals. I don't see why the process would be any shorter. It's going to take the same six, nine months, whatever it takes. If that is the case, I don't know if the committee has a choice but to go with whoever is already on board to run until you find a permanent candidate.
Thank you. So, with respect to the first question you asked in terms of the philosophies, et cetera, we talked a lot at our last meeting about the things that were important to the district and the committee as part of the district, and one of them is capital planning, which you can see by the armrest that keeps falling off your chair. That's one of the items on the agenda, but I'm sorry about that. That needs some attention, clearly. But in all seriousness, when we go through the process, which we'll talk a little bit more about, in terms of coming up with a list of things that are important for the search, for the superintendent, the philosophies, et cetera, that are important to the district would be part of that, and it will be documented there.
Is there a timeline for that? Because you cannot start a search until you finish documenting.
It's part of the timeline, yes. It would happen before the search is opened up. Thank you. Okay. Any more comments from the school committee at this point in time? Okay.
Timelines for the interim and permanent, they're going to be the same, right? You're, you're going to take just as long to find an interim as you're going to take, because the due diligence is going to be the same.
I don't think it necessarily would take as long, because it wouldn't, it probably would not be a nationwide search for an interim superintendent. That's my guess. I mean, it could, you know, it's certainly possible, but I would anticipate it would be a shorter search process, simply because of that, if nothing else. Okay, so, we've talked about interim versus permanent, we've talked a little bit about internal candidate versus external candidate. Do you think it makes sense at this point to move on, to talk a little bit about the process for a search, and then we can circle back to the agenda item number five? Is that all right with everybody? Okay. So, when we went through the search the last time, I think that's included in our packet, the previous search timeline and some of the other documentation from the last search. And I know I've been on the last two searches, so, as one of the audience members commented, it's quite a, quite a process. But our last search was in fall of 2013, and culminated in, I want to say it was February, the late February timeframe, when we finally finished the search. But just to run through the timeline for benefit of the audience or anybody else that's watching, the first month of the process, we discussed the process and the timeline, and these things didn't all happen at the same meeting. We made a decision whether to vote on, I'm sorry, we made a decision whether to hire a search firm. We talked about the profile of the search committee members that we wanted to have take part in the process. We publicized the search committee profile, and we invited volunteers to step forward, and I recall that being about a two-week process from the time we advertised it to the time, for the deadline. And then we also invited search firms to submit a proposal within that first month. In the second month, we reviewed the volunteers for the search committee and identified a slate of members for that search committee. We looked as a committee at the search firm proposals, and we selected those to interview. The school committee appointed a search committee and selected the firms to interview. We then had interviews for those search firms, and we made a selection, and I think that was a two or three-night process. We discussed the superintendent compensation and qualifications. We gave the search committee a charge for them to do their work, and then the publicity began in putting out documents, brochures, et cetera, by the search firm to advertise. And then we also started setting up community-focused groups and put a schedule together for that. We had an online survey in the third month that was open for community input, and I think that was asking for the community's view on what was important for a candidate. The search committee began meeting that month, and we also had meetings and discussions with community leaders, asking for their input on what was important for a superintendent search. And then once we hit December, which was the fourth month, we had deadline for applications from candidates. The search committee met to review the applications and the community input, and we developed interview questions. We chose the candidates that were to be interviewed and the protocol to be used during those interviews. And then in January, which was month number five, we started the candidate interviews. The search committee determined the finalists and presented those to the school committee. Then we had more public forums held for each finalist to meet the community. We had public input and feedback gathered via email and handouts. We contacted the finalists' references, and then we also did site visits. I don't see that on this agenda, but we did do site visits for each candidate. And then we had interviews for the finalists at a, an open school committee meeting, and that was followed by a vote, and then announced to the community, the new superintendent. So, it was a good five-to-six-month process that we followed. So, hopefully that answers some of, some of the questions that people might have had about the process in the past. Yes, Diane.
Any recollection of the cost for the search firm?
Oh, boy, I'd have to go back and look. I don't remember off the top of my head. I don't remember. Christina, you don't remember, do you?
I think I remember, but I hesitate to say till I can check.
Yeah, I want to double-check it, too. We can get that for the next meeting. Sorry.
One thing I'd like to comment on is, looking at the prior search to this, the process, I think, is similarly long, but it was shifted about two months later, where the appointment, the final appointment was made in March. Applications weren't due until January, and I think we'd have to discuss as a committee, what's the exact best timing to get the best candidates? But I think, given the slate of events and activities we have planned for the fall, it may make sense to do it a little bit later, like the prior search, getting applications in January as opposed to before. Just something to think about.
Okay. Any other comments from the committee? Okay, so that's the process. Excuse me, hold on one second. So, that's the process for a full superintendent search.
Can I make a quick comment?
Certainly.
Just for the benefit of people who are not familiar with the process, it may be useful. This is just factual. The process is that candidates for this position, their application is confidential until the last three finalists are selected. Those names then become public. That's state law. Therefore, whether they're internal candidates or external candidates, they can apply for this position, not knowing who the other applicants are, excuse me, while the search is going on. It's only if, to briefly go back to previous point, if somebody is an interim superintendent, that would be known. But the names of the people applying for the position are not known to the other candidates.
Thank you. That's correct. So, when the search committee, who is typically, it's typically made up of a number of different constituents, on the last two searches, we had school committee members, members of the public, we had different community leaders involved, we had building principals, teachers, I want to say there were probably 13 or 14 different people on the search committee the last time, and I think it was even a larger group by maybe one or two the time before. So, it was a very broad representation of the community, and there were lots of other ways for the community to give input throughout the process, which I alluded to when we went through the timeline as well. When the search committees meeting after, actually before and during the search process, coming up with the questions to ask, going through the initial set of applicants that come in, all of that is done in executive session for the very reason that was just stated. You can imagine folks from districts putting in an application, and they don't get the job, but it could jeopardize their current position, and that's the reason why it's all confidential. And typically, the school committee, as part of its charge, will ask for the search committee to bring forward a number of candidates. Sometimes they specify three, you could specify four, or whatever the number is, as finalists in the position, whatever seems appropriate. And once those finalists are named, then their names become public. So, thank you very much for the recommendation to mention that. Diane.
And I also want to clarify, we don't even, if we're not on the search committee, we don't even know the names. We only know the finalists when it's presented to everybody, so the executive session is truly only the search committee, no one else.
That's correct. The school committee members as a whole don't, don't know. Only those who sit on the committee do. Yes?
Thank you. Just a quick question, or two questions, to understand, I've just heard your pro, the process. So, do you anticipate that we will have a new superintendent by the beginning of, not this coming year, but the following year? Is that what the hope is? Or do you have, can you even make that decision right now, or guess?
So, typically, when, when the committee puts, when the school committee would put together the information regarding the search, we'd have a start date indicated, and it could be the first day of the next fiscal year, it could be before that, I suppose. I don't know if you'd get candidates that would leave a job mid-year, probably not, but that would be part of what was put out in the public.
Okay. And just for clarification, Christine, I, if we postpone some of that stuff, like, as you were suggesting, is that going to cause the start date to be later? My, my, my concern and the reason for asking is, the capital projects, I just don't know, it just seems like the superintendent is going to be in charge of that, and it, it's just such a big thing, that I don't want, I want a superintendent as soon as we can possibly get one, so that they're overseeing all that money and all that project. And so, go ahead, sorry.
I was just comparing the last two searches we have done, which had different dates in which the finalists were appointed, or the, the superintendents were appointed, they had similar start dates. So, I think there's certainly flexibility within all of this, if you plan ahead.
Okay. Thank you. So, we've gone through a little bit about the process for a search, and I think it's probably a good time to circle back a little bit and talk about interim versus permanent superintendent. And what I'm hearing from the committee is that we want to continue, we want to, we want to talk about an interim superintendent position, potentially. That was the consensus we got a minute ago, but at the same time, start a full superintendent search at this point. I think if we were to, to begin a superintendent search right now, and this is not being an expert in the search field, but I wonder what it would look like if we got all of our ducks in a row in terms of the process, making all the decisions we needed to make, and to the point where we started advertising, if your advertising timeframe is longer. You know, it sort of gets to what you were talking about, Christine. I remember that for the last search, we, we shortened the, the timeframe up a little bit. My recollection is, we did that because we felt the previous search didn't start My recollection is, we did that because we felt the previous search didn't start necessarily soon enough, and we wanted those extra few weeks at the beginning, because candidates often will be looking, you know, the November-December timeframe. But I wonder if we started advertising sooner than we did the last time, which was really November, if you, but extended that for a longer period of time, what that might look like from a candidate-attracting standpoint. I don't know if anybody has thoughts on that.
Well, I would think, I mean, I think there are a lot of people who know already.
Yeah.
But I would think we'd want to advertise pretty early, as early as we're ready. But we could leave the window open enough so that if people who hadn't thought about it, it gets them thinking, you know? So the, I mean, the idea would be to attract a really good pool. And so, I, you know, I think of a good window, but early, because we want to jump on, I mean, you hate to lose good people who get interested in other searches ahead of you, too.
Right. Right. I suppose it's the kind of thing, too, where you could always reopen the search, as we did in the past. Diane?
But regardless of the search, I mean, superintendent's contracts go to end of school year, right? So we're just opening up the window to try and get the most candidates, but end date would still end up being end of school year, right?
Probably, yeah. Can I see a hand?
At this point, if we're kind of going down parallel paths of the, looking for the interim while we start the permanent search, in my view, we kind of have a luxury of time on organizing ourselves for the permanent search. So, you know, I like the idea of keeping the window open to make sure that we, you know, have as much of an opportunity to get the best candidates as we can. But I heard what my esteemed colleague from Minuteman Ridge said earlier, and I'm not following the delay. Why would we want to delay? If we could flesh that out a little bit.
I think I just have the special town meetings in December on my mind, thinking that that's going to be a big effort, but not for all the same people on this committee. So I think, actually, to talk through it is helpful. If I'm running the building committee, as I've planned, I'm obviously not going to even be on the search committee. So I probably shouldn't worry that it's going to be too much work, because it's not going to be my work. So I think I was just sort of trying to process that way. And I think having Bridget's experience on both committees and realizing that the second time we did this, it was changed for a reason, to compensate for a deficiency in the first process. That's very helpful to me, and I didn't know that, so.
Mary?
I would just say also that we want to be careful that we don't rush things, so that, like, I would hate to put out a request to the community to apply to be on the search committee in the middle two weeks of August, and people who aren't paying attention, because they're away, aren't applying. And so, I think we can use this time to get ourselves ready and then make that request as soon as everyone's back in the fall, perhaps, so that people are paying attention.
Yeah, and that's still earlier than the process started, the last time. Yeah.
Well, I think you're kind of getting in line with what I was saying. I know that one of the concerns with starting a search now versus the fall is that you wouldn't get the best candidates, and we definitely want the best candidates. But I was wondering if we could organize earlier, so that way you're hitting the ground running. I think some of you were alluding to that.
Yes.
Like, get this, I mean, I know Mary was saying that she is afraid that people wouldn't be paying attention. I think a lot of people are paying attention.
I get that sense somehow, yeah.
So I think maybe if you do start organizing the search committee and you're hitting the ground running as soon as you can in the fall, that would be my idea of a good thing.
Yep.
And my only other question is, how many people on the school committee are on the search committee? Is it one? Is it two? TBD?
You know, it's TBD, TBD, really. I think last time, we had two, three? Was it three? And I think there were three the time before that as well, so.
I was just curious. I'm kind of a newbie.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I said, "I'm kind of a newbie," so I was just curious.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But it was also pre-regionalization, so we were two committee members less.
That's right.
So, you know, we didn't have an extra box row committee member or?
But it was a regional search. It was pre-regionalization.
It was pre-regionalization. So, that's what I'm saying. So it was three out of, less, you know, out of nine.
Yes.
Opposed to eleven.
That's correct.
That's what I was.
That's correct. Yes, Paul?
And then we had a separate committee for the site visits. Because I wasn't on the search committee, but I was on the?
I think the school committee members did the site visits, and that was whoever was available at the time did the site visits. Yeah, I think that's right. Yes?
I have a question, and then I think a statement. We have to go to the town, right, to ask for the money for the search committee or firm, and any of the costs that are going to be incurred for looking for a superintendent, correct?
No, we'll have to find that in our budget. The budgets have already been voted for this year.
So whatever is left over, so we don't have to ask for an override or anything like that, to ask for extra money?
No.
Where exactly is this money coming from?
That's what the school committee has to figure out, how we're going to pay for this.
Was that ever a consideration before the previous decision was made?
Well, sure it was. Yes.
Okay. I just think there's a lot going on that people out here just aren't getting. And I don't know that you, as a committee, are getting that. And I appreciate the woman earlier who said that there was a missed connection between last week and this week, and I thought we had to ask for more money. But this should be on the agenda, because there's nothing more important than trust between a community and its leaders who are elected to do the job that we're asking. And if you don't think superintendents who are out there, possibly, who could be looking at this job, aren't listening to what's going on in our community, then you're deceiving yourselves, and you're not being honest with yourself or us. And that's the issue with going forward. It's why we can't move forward. And I think my question was, I thought, we have to ask for more money. No one's really going to vote for more money, because we don't, there's a lack of trust. This committee, 2014, was found guilty of lack of transparency. Right now, there's a question of your lack of transparency. That is a huge issue. That's going to go forward with the new superintendent. They're going to listen. They're not going to want to deal with that. They're not going to want to deal with the rumors that are out here. And I think it's a disservice and a dishonest way of doing business to just say, "Well, we're just going to move ahead." It's not on the agenda, because we intentionally didn't put it on the agenda. And that's the type of behavior that's gotten the committee in the position that it's in right now. Nobody, or a majority, and you're welcome to stand up if you agree with me, trust you to find a superintendent qualified and keep them. You've completely lost the trust of your community, and you are refusing to answer that lack of trust and that bridge. Last week, I came into the meeting, completely hearing things, not sure what was going on, sat down, and in five minutes, you so offended my intelligence that I got up and spoke extremely upset with you as a committee. Because you talked to me like I was stupid and didn't get what was going on with you and what happened with Mr. Brand. People don't resign and get $200,000. I want that job. That's called a forced resignation. Call it what it is. What is the next superintendent going to do? Is he going to trust you to force resign him because there's somebody in the wings you want? That's the rumors. So you're wanting to move on, and yet, at some point, you're going to ask us for more money? And we, as parents, are going to say, "No, I don't trust you." So I would strongly encourage, I'm trying to be politer, because I understand you work very hard, but you can work very hard and fail at your job. And you failed at your job when, in 2014, there was no transparency, and there's no transparency now. Maya Angelou, when you know better, you do better. You did not do better if you were on this committee back then. And I just ask you and implore you to put on the agenda a way, talk amongst yourselves, I know one of you up there.
We can't do that.
I mean, talk amongst yourselves in public, how you plan on bridging that, so that the next superintendent can be confident that they have the community support that they have, that we are one, because we're not. And I would suggest you start by coming up with a philosophy, that they know ahead of time and that we know ahead of time. And I'm sorry if that wasn't on the agenda, because I had a different path, but that's what I would request from you as a committee. Build the trust back. Don't be defensive. If you behave badly, you get bad consequences. If you behave well and are honest, you get good consequences. We want to support you. We don't. Superintendents know that. They're not silly. They listen. They pay attention. If you want the best candidates for the job, build a bridge.
Thank you very much for your comments. So the best way that we can build a bridge is continue to have as much public participation as we can. I will note that that was way over two minutes, but I appreciate the comments. And, well, you know, we had a very long meeting last week, and we listened to every comment that folks got up and said. And at the end of the day, you can disagree with us, and you can disagree with what we've done, and that's absolutely fine, and we encourage the communication. But at the end of the day, we're all still neighbors, and I just want to put that out there. So I appreciate the comments that were made, and we'll do our best to continue this process in an open and as transparent a way as we possibly can. We've talked about the process going forward, being full of opportunities for the community to get involved, and that's what we hope you'll do. So thank you very much. Any other comments from the committee on any of that? Okay. So I think, at this point, we should round back up again and see where we are in terms of a plan to go forward. We have on the agenda a possible vote to discuss an interim superintendent versus a permanent superintendent position. I heard some consensus that we wanted to go forward, looking for an interim superintendent, either an internal or an external candidate. Is anyone interested in making a possible motion for that? Yes?
I thought we're not allowed to vote on things the first time they're brought up in a meeting, though.
We can if we decide we want to, but that's why it's noted. If we're not comfortable doing that, then we can move it to the next meeting, and that's absolutely fine. We'll probably have to schedule a separate meeting if we decide not to take any action tonight to move forward, because I know our next agenda is really, really full of regular business. So I'm happy to suggest that as well, if we don't want to take any formal votes tonight. Katie?
If we have consensus, I really think it's important that we move forward as quick as we can in a search, just because it's going to take some time, and the faster we can start looking for a qualified candidate, the better we'll be off in the end.
Eileen?
So, I think I needed to be clearify what we're doing here. So, I'm sorry. So I get so many, you know, here are so many comments, this and that, and we discuss this and back and forth, you know? So Marie does not want to take the interim superintendent as her consideration?
So I think, right now, we need to make a decision whether we're going to go forward tonight and vote on whether to search for an interim superintendent, regardless of any particular person being interested or not.
I understand that.
Okay.
Okay. So, but if we did not, we could not find any candidate for that purpose, so she will be acting superintendent right away anyways.
At the end of June, yes.
At the end of June, right?
At the beginning of July, as of July 1st.
So, so why don't we start the permanent superintendent searching process instead of doing interim superintendent? Because we're going to have acting superintendent anyways.
Mary?
So my concern with that is that we then put her into full-time positions for likely a year. And that's not sustainable, especially with all the work that we want to get done, continue to get done in the region. And so, I think that, I don't think that's a viable approach.
Paul?
I'm thinking we need to put the vote off, because to me, what I heard tonight and what I heard the other night was a lack of trust, and no other issue has the same importance. So I think we need to put the vote off.
Okay. Any other comments? So do I hear a consensus that we want to put off taking any action in terms of a vote tonight? It sounds that way. Yes, sir?
Hi, I'm Sanjay from Acton. So I have just one question, and I'm trying to understand, that based on what I heard here today, that this position for the deputy superintendent was not there, and the position was created, and that's where Marie stepped in and she became the deputy superintendent. And it is my understanding that, based on whatever I heard, that, you know, the role is, like, you know, once the superintendent is not there, then she steps up and takes the responsibility and, you know, does whatever needs to be done. And I think this is the unprecedented situation, and in this situation, we need, like, you know, someone who steps up. So it's kind of very, I mean, I'm very puzzled to understand, like, I don't understand why she does not want to step up, and she does not want to, like, you know, be acting as an interim superintendent? And is that because, like, you know, she actually wants to apply for the actual job? Or, like, you know? So, I mean, that's my question, and I'm trying to understand that.
So I can't really speak to her reasons why. I don't believe she gave us reasons in her letter. I'm sure there's, you know, you can guess to what those reasons might be, but I can't really speak to them. I think, in terms of having someone, whether it's Marie or anyone else, in a deputy superintendent position, the reason you have a deputy is for someone to step in when the superintendent is out of the office. And again, I think that's very different from expecting someone who's a deputy superintendent with a full slate of responsibilities to step up and do that, do the superintendent job, as well as the person's current job for an extended period of time. As Mary said, that's just not sustainable over time, so.
I'd also like to add that Marie was already in central office. She leads all the human resource and personnel issues and does a lot of other functions. It was just promoted to a deputy superintendent position. So it's not that there was no person doing all the work that she does, and so that's where it's two jobs. So just to be clear about that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Thank you. I just feel that there should be a step taken before you even talk about the interim superintendent. And I understand, Mary, what you're saying about the legality of it, but I think you have to, at least, discuss whether the interim will be able to apply for the job or not. And you can have, like, a footnote to make sure that that's legal if it's a not. But I can't, I feel it's in the best interest of our community for that statement to at least be out there. We're going to have an interim, and either they can also apply for the superintendent or? job, or they cannot apply for the superintendent job. My preference is not. I feel like it will hamper the candidates that we will get. And I understand that you are hoping to contact people or somehow get people who are retired and know the community to come in and fill in and do things so that it will run smoothly. But I just feel that that step should be done first before even voting on if we're going to have an interim or in conjunction with that, and I would like your opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have that question down, and we'll follow up with our counsel on it as to whether that can be a limitation put on a job search.
Okay, so that will also be part of when you're talking about the interim after you find out?
Well, we'll get the answer to the question and then take it from there.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, this is Sushin Rada. So yesterday, there was an email sent to the school committee, and I know Alan discussed about it. I know you had quite some things on the agenda, and we really didn't go through that whole thing, of course, you read it. But I would like to know, the third point, what we had requested is, like, the school committee reinstated the qualification, which was used during the superintendent search of 2008, 2009, which hired superintendent bills. So where do you guys stand on that? What is the requirement now? Because as I understand, in the last search, there was no educational requirement. So where do we stand there? Is that something you guys are considering going forward in your agenda, so we can discuss? Or you already have decided?
So both of the lists of qualifications from the last two searches were in our packet tonight. We're not at the point where we will go through and determine what the qualifications are going to be, but I think it's fair to say we'll consider both sets of qualifications and have a discussion about that in public.
It will be tonight or?
Probably not. It doesn't look like we're going to be ready to take that step tonight.
And whenever it will be, it will be part of the agenda as well?
It will be part of the agenda, yep, okay. I don't know at which meeting yet. We'll probably have to have another special meeting.
No, that's fine. We'll be watching the agendas.
Okay, good, thanks.
Hi, Eileen Mavrisi, Six Madison Lane. I have two quick comments. One is, will the same, do you suspect the same three people who did the last search committee hiring from the school committee be doing this one?
I don't know. We haven't discussed it yet, but I know one of those persons is off the committee now, and Christina's got another set of responsibilities.
And is that something, just so we understand the process, is that something you like volunteer to do, or are you-
Yeah, it would be somebody stepping up to volunteer on the committee to do that, yes. And that would be done in a public meeting.
Okay. And my other timeline question is, where do you imagine this hiring, especially if we're talking about delaying it till the sort of typical school superintendent sort of search cycle of starting kind of in November and ending in the late spring for July 1st? Do you imagine this happening with the existing 11 before school committee votes happen next time or after?
You mean before the next set of school committee elections?
Yeah.
Well, that wouldn't take place until April and May, so if we had any hope of getting a superintendent on board, if we wanted to wait until a new set of school committee members or whoever's up next year is elected, then we wouldn't start a search for a whole year. So I would imagine the process, assuming it was a successful process, would take place starting sometime this fall, culminating with a decision if we were able to get the right candidate sometime next spring.
Okay, so I'm just confirming that the process we're talking about will sit in the hands of the same 11 people?
Yes, unless for some reason that process, we didn't get enough candidates or whatever, and then it's possible there could be some turnover.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
Hi, my name is Elise Jacobson, and I live in Acton. I just have a quick comment, and I hope that it's perceived as constructive, but I'm hearing that there's still a lot of mistrust and the need to have that somehow addressed. And one of the things that I thought I'd share, based on experience I had living in another town, was going through a very similar process in the loss of a superintendent and a lot of population riled up around issues that really needed to be addressed, as well as there being many, many initiatives underway and a very expensive building project as well. I have great confidence in the pool of superintendents that are available that are retired. They have seen it all, they've done it all, and the town that I lived in got someone that was excellent, who happens to be local to this area. I won't speak as, everybody knows who's available. And I wonder if it might be useful to consider reaching out in a very informal way, if you're allowed to do that, just to make inquiries and see whether any of those individuals are even available right now. And if they are, we as a public might have trust being able to move forward with at least the interim piece of it, so that we have an idea, these are some of the kinds of quality individuals that you could consider. And just to add to that, this individual that I'm thinking of really led the committee as well as the individuals who were really invested at that point, and lots of individuals were invested, which is a good thing, but led us through a process where trust was regained, and that's what seasoning and real good experience can get you, even if it's just for a year or two. So that's all I wanted to share.
Thank you. Okay, so I think we need to schedule another meeting to move forward on the agenda with the goal of making a determination on an interim search and moving further down the line of agenda items for a full superintendent search. So I'm going to ask Beth to do another doodle, or whatever it is, Beth, to try to get us a meeting date where we can do that. Is that acceptable to everybody on the committee? Okay. So just to move through the other items on the agenda, so also in our packet, we do have the two sets of search candidate qualifications, so take a look at those before our next meeting and become familiar with those. And then also in our next packet, it's not in this packet, but we should pull together the profile of the search committee that we had the last time, so that we're in a position at the next meeting to talk about, talk about that and what we think about the search committee, whether that's for interim or a full superintendent search. And then also at the next meeting, we'll talk about whether we want to look at a search form, and we can pull some information from the last two searches to see what we did there. Does that sound like a plan? Everybody's comfortable with that? Okay. So moving on to item eight on the agenda, we have two sets of open meeting minutes for the executive sessions on April 26, 2017, and May 2, 2017, that we need to vote on. And those minutes are in your packet. And I would entertain a motion to approve. Move to approve. Okay, any discussion? Are you moving on both sets of minutes? Okay, is there any discussion either about the minutes on April 26 or May 2? No further discussion by the committee? Okay, all in favor of approving those minutes, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any no votes? Any abstentions? One abstention. So we have one abstention? Yep. Okay. Thank you for that. And our next regularly scheduled meeting is June 8 at 7:00. Right now, it's posted for the library. We can see if this room's available in case we have a bigger crowd, although I think, I didn't count heads. I don't know if this crowd probably would have been a little bit tight in the library, so we'll have to look, Beth, and see if we have room or space in this room for that meeting. And then the next meeting's on June 22. So let me just go through my sheet and make sure I didn't miss anything. Sure, Diane?
So at the risk of making you all hate me, I'm going to throw out a, like, a totally crazy idea here. There seems to be sentiment in the community that we should approach Glenn and ask him if he wants to be here, which would be an interesting question, and I'm wondering if that's something we should consider doing.
So if we want to do that, then that's not on our agenda tonight to take a vote or even a discussion about that, so we would have to add that to our next agenda and have a discussion as a committee about that. So we can only discuss things that are on our posted agenda, and it has to be posted 48 hours before the meeting, so I'm sorry if that's frustrating to anybody in the committee. It can be really frustrating for us sometimes, too, but that's what the law says, so we can certainly put that on our next agenda as an agenda item. Paul?
Let's put it on the agenda.
Okay.
To me, we've got so much that we need to do that we need that trust.
Did you get that, Beth, for our next agenda? Okay, thank you. Any other business from the committee? Okay, if not, then I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any noes? Any abstentions? Okay, that's unanimous. Thanks, everybody, for coming tonight.